Hey Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
Do you know where the corporate solar field is this company is talking about that they own right now?
Did you sell it?
I'm not certain about where they currently own. They developed one outside of Cedar Rapids.
Did you make a package on sale?
Um, I don't know where all the other projects.
Well, I talked to a guy in Texas and the one that he got destroyed down there.
We tried to talk business before we started meeting at six o'clock.
I wasn't talking business.
That's talking business. That's talking a topic that's before the information, so I don't want to get us in legal trouble. Let's get you in legal trouble. So, yeah, we'll have a work session on solar sometime in the future. That would be the time to bring up things of that nature.
We got one schedule.
Right, I'm not certain what day it is.
The fourth, December 4th?
Couple weeks.
Hi there, I'm Jason.
Ernie Eva.
Ernie, nice to meet you. Glad to have you here.
I will get them off on 26 and if you don't have the copy of that one, go back to the title. You can't do anything for 105.
Right, they just had to come off with for an issue.
If you had pulled right after you sold it, you'd have been able to take it off after those tax statements are generated.
That's what I figured, that it'd be more of a change because
Hello, how we doing?
All right.
Was that your question?
It's so dark. It's glowing.
Oh.
Yeah, why? Hey. Doesn't probably help. Just shows what angle we are.
It's time to look at this before, is it?
Right. Two chapters in the morning said things that happened yesterday.
I've kind of realized that it's some regulations.
There aren't any regulations.
I did that. When you guys gave it to me, I couldn't get through.
I mean, that is the overview. Uh huh. Wherever you want. I didn't realize that. It's got a separate.
I save lots of money for the county here.
Postage, yep. Wow, that is the real, my favorite part. Postage is the worst part of it.
Marine was in our area. I mean, it's just something that was in here for hundreds of years. Does it even make sense?
So, the last packet that you guys got, the packets from the last meeting, I don't think I have the survey in there for it, so.
Okay.
I think you did, because I you don't have it?
I don't know, you're gonna get another copy. Otherwise, yeah.
Great. Thank you. I've seen this before, so I don't know. Wonder if it's in or not.
Man.
See how nice I am? I'm still nice, maybe.
I mean, they are pretty. You too.
Do you want to sign on for another three years?
I'm looking at.
I'm just gonna have to sign application again and date it. If you want to.
I've just got that.
And just signed on the half end?
Yeah.
Half end, something.
Here's yours that you can sign and date it. That is my copy. Jason. Do you need that? Want another three years?
Sure.
Sign underneath that. Hello. Thank you. Thank you. I guess in the packet from the last the last package that I gave you.
Okay, true.
And that's I have Chase, a teacher at the office. This will go in your packet that you received from me.
Perfect.
And then, there's the new stuff for the summer that we added to that. This is just for you to know your terms are up.
Okay, so we're at six o'clock. We've had the time that we've had discussion. So, we just wanted to start going through the comp plan from the first page. Seeing if there's comments that people have heard in the past one. This time, would that be the best way to do that?
Or if we had specifics, though.
Just to start there.
Just got to start with two lines. Realize that most, more so of what I was looking into is in the zoning regulations as opposed to the comprehensive plan. So, I don't know how to go about that.
Okay. You have anything specific on the comp plan itself, then? I'm hearing.
Not really. I mean, one thing I did hear was the commissioners talked about a while back of, you know, going through this, like the sensitive habitat areas, you know, is that even relevant? Well, I mean, I don't know that we need to take it out or anything. It was just, it makes that book even thicker that that is all.
Is it designated?
Thirty-one. Where it starts, but it's not even something worth discussing, I was just bringing it up.
Part of the use for that stuff is as a public document, anybody coming into county can see that stuff and is least aware of those potential issues.
Okay.
So, it's informative information for anybody coming into the county. Which, this is basically what people come into county, look at and say, what's this county gonna do in the future? So, you know, anything that's not in line with this document is there, this is kind of an implied contract between the citizens and the county government. And so, people coming into county, look at this, I believe in that body.
Okay. Jonathan, should we do your introduction?
I think that would be, I was thinking the same exact thing. So, Jonathan Weimer, mayor. Chris Gordon, the villa.
Trevor Ashcraft.
Ernie Eva, mayor.
Jason Murphy, hold on. Luke Kennedy, technically hold on.
Jeff Fisher, hold on.
I've read through most of the comp plan, but I have not looked quite to the end yet myself. So, there may be some data we want to update. Population and housing data.
That got updated last year with the census.
Right, with the 2020.
The 2020 census. And they won't do another one for the, until 2030.
Exactly, but there's a 2024 estimate, so we may or may not may not robustly whether it's being actually included, but that's a possibility. Really good. Not for all, every piece of data, but one or two of them. There's a rural residences map that I wonder if it's been looked at since. One of the, it's titled, I didn't mark it, but I don't know if there's enough difference that needs to be updated.
Forty-nine knows about it.
Were done by professionals. These were done by a professional engineering firm, which you probably noticed about 23 years ago. And so, the county would need a contract with another, you know, four and I don't know.
There hasn't been like a huge increase.
Yeah, but the point is review it. It's important to look at.
As far as the land we're talking about with the housing stuff, the, I made some highlights in chat before. Maybe you can just run through some of these.
Okay, okay. Page forty-nine.
Page forty-nine talks about future land use. Suburban tiers. So, this is based on greater than five acre lots. And then, if you go down to page fifty-one, where it talks about US seventy-five tiers. Talks about a minimum of twenty acres. But then it says permitting three acre lot clusters at an average net density of one unit per twenty acres. So, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's where you're trying to focus as far as trying to.
I think that's my my intent, I guess, is to maybe possibly change that to allow, to, to, in certain areas, and it goes, kind of goes back to the slantage map. Along Seventy-five corridor or within a certain radius of the cities. That we would allow that denser, density to be smaller. A lot of people in these higher residential areas don't necessarily want twenty acres. And it doesn't keep it rural by making them have twenty acres. But where we could put more houses in that and get more tax revenue off of those. That's kind of where I'm, I'm looking at. Ninety-fourth street, cross the county line, Shawnee County has a 250 foot road front. Cross the county line, we have twenty acres. We're losing out a lot of that if we could allow more houses to be built in those areas.
Well, the biggest thing though, like on, along Seventy-five highways, the state has jurisdiction that you can't, like down there between 142 and the power plant going south on the right-hand side. That ground that's in there for sale, you can only have one house due to the turnoff into it. If not, then you have to bring a county road in to bust that ground up and just like ten acre plots. And that's all it do, it's at the expense of the landowner, not the county. And that's, that's the biggest thing, because, well, I live right on Seventy-five highway and I run into it when in ninety-three, when they come through, I used to go and flirt over to the northbound lanes. And then, when they come through, they put the stipulations, they got a lot tighter. Because I couldn't have no driveway that went from my commercial property or from my house that went to the highway. I had to come off of 162nd Road and build the road to it. So, and it don't matter if it's industrial ground, because I've got A1 heavy industrial ground that I had to put a sixty foot wide road in, that's why I got a sixty foot approach coming off of 162nd. So, there's, there's more to it than what we're seeing right here, because I have read through it too.
Yeah, I wouldn't say I was specifically meaning entrances off the highway. I was just meaning that corridor, I mean, if it was a mile wide, you know, could be land on the other side of it. It wasn't necessarily meaning.
Well, I don't have a problem with the, you know, getting it down till, I would say instead of making them have one house on a twenty acre plot, like down there along Ninety-fourth Street, I don't see a problem with going to a ten acre plot. But if you go down Ninety-fourth in Rochester, where they, they dropped that all back down to three acre plots. And, I mean, it's crazy. Because they went in and they took eighty acre plots and they're just, every three acres is, you know, a house. So, you know, it's one of those deals, yes, it's gonna bring the tax prices up. But, the biggest thing is what can turn me on to tax prices, you know, being able to lower up and down like that by letting more houses in. The biggest thing that I've seen going on here lately, especially in our county, is the excessive spending that shouldn't be done just to create more taxes that the average person needs to pay.
Right, we can't control that.
Well, I know, but, but to the point of, you know, I, I don't see no problem with, you know, ten acre plots and have a house versus one house in a twenty acre plot.
Things that we need to be careful about, I think, and they're, and they're reflected in the language in the comp plan, is the cities in Jackson County really haven't grown a whole lot. There's a whole bunch of reasons for them to be, why that has not yet happened. Although there's some things that are positive that, that may be happening in the future. Is that we, we need to be careful about creating a zone around each city that is built up with small, as in three acre lots, that then are difficult for those cities to then annex and expand because the houses are so far apart. Now, if there's a ten acre zone, that would be better, because sometimes, if you go into northern Shawnee County, you can find it in certain places. It's been there for a number of years, so there's a three acre lot and it's this wide. So, there's, and then, I know some, some of you may as well, they're maybe, maybe a hundred dish feet wide, but six hundred feet long. So, they've got all that land back at the back that no one else can get to because of how narrow the lot is, they can never put in another drive without creating a really awkward situation for whoever owns the house that was there in the first place. So, I want to be, I hope that we would be careful about creating a situation that would impede our cities from growing at the point that they're ready to do so. So, creating a zone, we would need to word that and structure that in a way that wouldn't, wouldn't impede them. We can, we can continue talking about that, that could be a point.
Correct.
The other thing that landowners can do is, I think everyone knows, is they can, they have a larger parcel, they can then go ahead and sub it, if we want more houses in a smaller area, they can file a plat to subdivide that into three acre and five acre, or actually thirty thousand square feet, so about two acre or two acres or a real minimum if they filed a plat. So, we can get more disitting that way.
Yeah, I realize all that's in, I was just looking to simplify it, you know, make it just like the one that we got, or we missed last week. We're putting that guy another thirty days behind by having to approve that, so.
Continue. Do you have some other, other points you want to add?
Well, that's the main one, I mean, yes, there's others, but I just wanted to have a conversation about that, you know, seeing what people were thinking. I just think that there's a lot of people that want to build a house that don't want ten acres, don't want twenty acres. I know there's a guy that sold some land, had twenty acres, and he says, I don't need all this, I'm gonna sell ten acres off of it. Somebody approached him, said, can I buy ten acres? Sold it, deal went through, I don't know if they've tried yet, but they're gonna come with accounting and say, I want to get a building permit. Make game, because of that density, it's not a zone. I mean, it's in A1 zoning with twenty acres. So, I don't know.
They could get a building permit for, for a house. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that was an illegal split.
Right.
Yeah, that, it's already, that eighty has already been divided four times.
Yeah, and if that's part of that original eighty, then they can build a house on that.
There's already four houses. This is another split of that twenty.
Oh.
So, I don't think that they'll be.
No, not without rezoning. Right. If a person has forty and they, they are able to split that again, they could split off, it has to be at least three acres if they meet all their setbacks, right? And they can build on that, so you still have the twenty acre average. So, I mean, so there are ways around it, you just have to have enough.
Right, you don't have to own the whole twenty.
Right.
You just have, but you can only put two houses on that forty.
Yeah.
And that's what, in certain areas, I'd like to see. I mean, the reason for that, you know, in, in 2003 when we wrote this, was to preserve the rural aspect of it. Well, in today's world, we, we need more houses. People are looking for places to live and in the school system, but they need, you know, in order for the school system to grow, we gotta have people moving in and we gotta have more housing to do so. Twenty acres isn't really rural, I mean, now that they can have a horse or whatever, but if you could set it up to where you could take forty acres and, and give however, my three acre lots, like you said, they're narrow and they go back. But if you had a 250 foot minimum road front and three acres that goes back, well, that would leave, I mean, I don't know how many you'd get across the quarter mile, but that would leave that land at the back that the owner could still keep in a head of ground or pasture or whatever, they wouldn't have to sell off the whole twenty acre or forty acres. They could just sell off the plots on the front. I don't know.
Yeah, and that would be a discussion that we could have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if 250 feet's the right number, you know, we need to run some scenarios, okay? The other thing that I'm concerned about is on small, on small lots, is the placement of the dwelling. If the dwelling is placed right in the middle, then it makes, that makes it really awkward for someone, for them to sell that property, you know, to, to a developer who would then want to build a road around the side. If however, just as an example, they put the house, you know, a bit off, off center from, from the side of the lot, from the two sides, you know, the road's up here at the front. From the two sides, that would allow more, a more logical place for a, an access road to go through to build houses on that back area.
So, you're saying a three acre sliver? They're gonna sell something off of that three acres?
Right, that's what I think we want to avoid, because of.
I don't see that at some point as a possibility, I mean, that somebody could. They, they, they would own that three acres and so.
Yeah, yeah, the three acres plus some, some of the larger, yeah, it, you know, I'm just trying to think of scenarios for, you know, for what could happen in the future with each one of those parcels.
Correct.
That we would conceivably approve.
Well, that's one of the deals though, I you can go straight out 142 going west and there, not the first mile, but the second mile, there's probably fifteen, twenty houses that are built on long, narrow, three acre lots. But the trouble is, by doing that long, narrow, nobody can get back to the back half and without putting their own road in. And if you're gonna do that, then it needs to be set in writing that they cannot sell less than, if they're on three acres, the only way they, they've got to sell all three acres at one time instead of selling a piece of.
Well, that would be the minimum size would be three acres.
Yeah.
You couldn't make it smaller.
Yeah, and I, that's why I'm saying, I was probably, and there isn't a lot of three acre lots there, because I looked them up. And so, and I mean, most of them are built basically within a rock throw of 142nd, because they don't want to put a long drive in to get back in there. So, you know, it, to me, it would be in the way of the wording where, you know, three acres is, is no, if you do the three acre deal, that they cannot go any smaller than that.
I think we've already got it written in there, those three acres, I think it's the density is the, is the question. Right? To where? If you wanted to.
Do we have a proposal for a change to the density then?
What's that?
Do we have a proposal for the change, or the change language would be for the density?
Well, there's different areas too, you know, you have US seventy-five, which I'm assuming it says that it's within a mile and a half of the city, or a mile and a half of US seventy-five, right away.
Which figure you want?
Fifty-one.
Uh, fifty-one. So that's an area. And then there's rural development, which is, it's the same, it's the, it's the same three hour, three acre cluster, but with the density. And so then, then you have the, uh, and then agriculture residential is a minimum size of twenty acres. So it's, if you're just kind of focusing on the, the, the US seventy-five corridor, so it, I, I keep going back to those houses that are, I don't even know what road it is, but it's up on the left, just about three miles south of Holden. There's like a little frontage road that goes back in there. They, they put some houses back up in there. You can see them from the highway.
Yeah, lead back to where Kennedy had the station for a while, Kathy. They, they built road back in there to the west and putting houses back in there.
No, this is on the, this is on the east side. It's between, it's north of where Kathy's was.
Okay. So it'd be north on the east side?
No, it's probably closer to Holden than, than that.
I think their access is off the old highway, you know, I mean, which, but yes.
It's off of, yeah, the, a different road. I.
Technically, the old highway is called Q Road right now.
Yeah, you might be able to bring it up, I don't know, south.
But yeah, they done that, they're, what is that?
It wasn't too long ago.
It's within a mile of the highway going east, they put a bunch of houses right through there. And it's basically over there on the south or on the north side where the lake is.
Where we at? That's right where the, that's where Shawnee County Country Stores is right there. Okay, so it's further north. Okay, do, do we have a right there? Go, go.
The fairgrounds is right here on the left.
What is this? Two fourteen or where the fairgrounds.
Two fourteen with the fairgrounds and the water.
Okay, go south a little. One more. Is that it? Right there?
Yeah, there's, there's that lake behind Kathy's.
It's hard to say where it's at, but it's on the east side of the highway. They just built them in the past. It's just north of it. If I was driving, I would know.
I would say it's up there. It's north of two fourteen, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, they just put it in the past ten years or so.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
Yeah, our janitorship used to be.
Yeah, I think it's platted.
Yeah.
I'm just, I mean, I, I didn't realize that most of what we're talking about is already available in here, but I'm just, I would like to see it easier. But if we could say, in, in this section, somebody comes in and says, I wanna, I wanna sell, or I wanna be able to sell off three acre lots, then the crazers office or the zoning office has the authority to say, okay, yeah, we can do that insert. We don't have to come and change the zoning to a R one or R two or even R three residential. Now, if you try to, you could do that out ten miles west of town, you'd have, but you'd have to go through that process because that's not in that queue. Follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Well, the biggest thing is though, if it's an eighty acre plot and they're wanting to bust it up into three acre plot, they're gonna have to maintain a road because it won't be accounted for. That's the biggest thing you're gonna run into on a deal like that.
Yeah, if you were to do it that way, you'd have to plot, you'd have to plot that one. I was just meaning the road frontage.
Okay.
I mean, if you had an eighty that ran with a half mile of road frontage, you could divide that one up. If you had a forty, you know.
So which section would we need to look at revising for that? Is that the seventy-five highway tiers? On fifty-one?
Depending on how far that tier goes out. Because just looking at the mile and a half. From the right away, US seventy-five right away and a mile and a half from the, uh, urban areas, which would be the towns.
And that distance may depend on where you are in the county. Because of that map, uh, that, the distance of that corridor is different.
I mean, in essence, we're looking at the Hoyt area as far as the, the most growth that we're seeing in the county. I mean, people moving out of Pika. When you look at the south side of ninety-fourth street. There's a mailbox everywhere.
Well, they done broke that all up. They made it till it fall into three acre plot.
But that's, you know, even so, even if you use that as an example, so the south side of that road is many houses. The north side is few houses, but they all use the same road. So where is the county maintenance is, you know, do we share that road or do they? And if we're still getting the traffic, but none of the revenue, why wouldn't we at least open up like a fourth street?
Well, te- technically ninety-fourth street is on a, a fifty-fifty deal. With Jackson County and Shawnee County, they split, uh, I was taking care of. From the center of the road to the north is Jackson County to take care of. And that, it's, you know, in a little fine area. But I, I don't see a problem with, the biggest thing that you're gonna run into down in that part of the neighborhood is, is the roads are mostly running north and south. Uh, from T four over to T road is, you know, one, I think it's T road that dead ends off of ninety-fourth. It goes back up in there and then it dead, it dead ends in the county. And then, uh, T four goes a full mile. And then on, over where it curves and goes ninety-fourth curves into Shawnee County more, then, uh, U and V road out there, uh, they're, they're pretty much mile roads too. So, but I, I don't think very many people build that far out into the neighborhood that way. I think you're gonna see more from, I would say basically from Rochester Road going to the west.
So could we add the, I mean, in the US seventy-five highway tier stops after Hoyt. So could we add in the south, couple of sections from, from basically where the suburban tier at Hoyt ends to the county line? Add that part into the highway seventy-five tier? And then figure out a way to make it, to allow a, a smaller density in that area. I got another question for you. Looking back on page fifty-three. Trying to see how this correlates with what we're talking about. So it talks about zoning, uh, urban density residential. Call for a ten thousand square foot lot, suburban, five acre. How does that correlate with what we're talking about?
And you mean, since we're talking about creating three acre lots, is that meaning that the area we're talking about is rural cluster residential or are we talking about suburban residential? Is that the question?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how this correlates with the tiers and locations. Is, is all this map?
At least, uh, if you look at the key on that map, the darkest purple color is named suburban.
So that would be considered suburban residential zoning?
I don't know. I think we have a technical.
I don't think there's an overlay district.
Right, for those areas.
So there's one for US seventy-five. And it talks about, uh, site plans being needed. So if you're, if you're looking at simplifying, then in the regulations of the US seventy-five overlay, which is.
So you're talking about the only route.
Mm-hmm. That's the biggest area that I see growing right now. West of Holden, maybe at some point. I mean, one thing, when somebody sells off twenty acres, they want the, you know, the maximum amount for it. But if you're trying to build a house, you don't need that. That takes out a lot of your budget just to buy a lane.
I would say from the school perspective, because we are constantly battling decline in enrollment. One of the biggest factors we encounter is the lack of affordable housing. If you, the land that is available to develop is twenty acres, like Luke says, that takes up the bulk of the budget just on the land aspect because land prices are so high now. But that's leaving far less to be able to actually build, which is now deterring people from moving to our area. That is not helping decline in enrollment.
Yes, but there, there's a, I think there's a little bit of a misconception. Uh, affordable housing, uh, really can only be built in the cities. Land cost, uh, utilities costs and all those sorts of things can only be supported, um, where you have a small development like the one here on Banner Road, uh, was just built a couple of years ago. It sold out like that. Um, so yeah, there's a number of factors that, that for affordable housing, the unincorporated areas don't really work. For that, for a number of input reasons. So we need, and we're behind as a county, as, as you're exactly stating, in creating more affordable housing in every community in the county, not just the city of Holden. There's ways that we.
So if you allow the people that are in the incorporated areas to move out of them, that would free up those incorporated areas for other people.
But then you're sending the tax base for the cities away.
Or it's.
What we need to do is physically expand the cities to incorporate those new residents. Is what we, what we would hopefully want to try to encourage.
And that's based on definitions for that, I think. So, I mean.
Because right now, a twenty acre lot versus a three acre lot with, you know, setup with water and sewer, you're not talking that much different. 'Cause I buy and sell ground too, but, uh, three acres right now down there off of ninety-fourth and Rochester Road is anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to two hundred thousand. And that's with a water meter on it. That's not a sewer or anything, that's just a water meter. And the guy on eighty-seventh street down there, he bought a hundred and sixty acres and put them all in three acre lots and put driveways into them and they was a hundred and fifty thousand a piece. And they sold like that. But you also gotta turn around and look, the average house in that area right now, which they're using, they're called the shed houses, they're made out of metal, but they are so fancy and extraordinary, it, I mean, it'll blow your mind. And I had a buddy get to build one, to build one out of lumber with siding and all that, and, and get to a shingle roof, bid was four hundred and eighty thousand on it. And going to the shed house, he done it for three hundred and twenty-five. So he's still got over a half a million dollars in a three acre house setup. But that's kinda, I don't know for sure on the stipulation to the three acres if they've got it set till they've got a, a ordinance that they have to go by on the house until you're not putting a house out of the ordinarily too small to make it look bad for all the people that are putting in half a million dollar homes.
But there again, that goes to, if you could put, if you had to buy twenty acres for that, you've got one half million dollar house on twenty acres. If you could put five of those on that, that really ups the tax base in that twenty acres. You know, if you can put five half million dollar homes up.
I would think though it'd be easier to, I, I would say, I would set a boundary up if it was within a mile and a half to two miles, you could get by of a major like Holden, Kansas or something like that. You could get by with the three acre deal, but anything farther away than that, it could be at least five.
Which is what we've kind of started this discussion with, was in a radius around the cities. Was the, the only part we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, not ten miles out of, out of town.
That's exactly the part that would choke the cities, is that ring around them. That's, that's what I think we should try to avoid in some way. And allow, allow some higher density a little bit beyond that, you know, say one mile out. Can you zoom in on Hoyt?
You want to avoid what now with the cities?
Creating, creating a choking ring around them.
Eliminating their option to annex.
Oh, yes, and that's what, that's what a three acre ring would do. Choke the city.
Boy, I was gonna say, voiding on this map, not this one anyhow.
Um, I just wanted to point out the, um,
Looks like it is.
Seventy-five corridor, all the stuff above the US seventy-five. In the zoning regulations is, uh, page a hundred and five to like a hundred and twelve, um, where there are some more requirements.
Can you talk about, um, HC highlights, that's important?
Yeah. Site plan reviews and all of that.
Is that a zoning change to the HC or is that, that's the overlay?
Well, it doesn't even really say overlay, um, just things to consider, I guess, when you're, when you're looking at, um, structures or development in that area. The site plan review is, is something that would have to go before the planning commission.
'Cause right now, they're, they're not letting, no. If it's, if you gotta turn off off of seventy-five to get into your eighty, or you could put one house on it, but if you wanna sell it and put more on it, you have to come off of a rural road and make a drive into it.
Talks about a rezoning that is required, depending on what type of zoning would be required off of seventy-five. I mean, you would have commercial, residential, and you'd have the correct zoning districts. It's, it's pretty specific that site plan reviews are required.
Can you talk about the, uh, Supreme Court opinion with the chief of state?
That was more pertaining to the source of what I was thinking about.
I just, okay, I just, I mean, it says that the nineteen ninety-eight Kansas Supreme Court opinion states that zoning regulations are to be construed liberally in favor of the property owner. And I think that a lot of times we constrict the property owners.
But that would be like in a special, a particular instance where you're trying to interpret a particular section or something.
Yeah. Just overall, it seems like we, we're HOA and the dues are property taxes. And we get to tell you what you can and do, can't build on your property, and if you approve it, then we're inaction law.
See, that's what...
So I'm just looking for a way to make it easier to, you know, not eliminate, but that might make life easier, I guess. I mean, I, I understood why this was done twenty years ago, and I remember when it came in, I kind of thought, yeah, that's gonna protect the land use from being taken away, you know, but if you have eighty acres, and I don't, I'm not gonna be able to, I'm not gonna rent it, and I'm not gonna own it, but if you wanna build houses on it, that shouldn't affect my, I mean, the, it'll help me as a, as a farmer, because it'll take that, you know, I don't know what...
I agree with you. Listen up, I mean...
It's hard to build in, I mean, a lot of people do, it's hard. I'm just trying to think in the last twenty years, what I've seen around Dillia, and it's lots of people have wanted to do it, and this and that, you just can't. You can't afford to pay for the ground and build a house that you wanna build, unless you got something in the bank.
Yeah, just right now, you're talking a hundred, at least a hundred grand for twenty acres.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's about for the ground, bare ground right now. Depending on where it's at, but right now, like the rule may edit, you're talking minimum of five grand for an acre.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, twenty acres are, that's what they're bringing, five grand.
But a, but a three-acre lot may bring twenty grand an acre.
Yep.
And so, as a property owner, if I could get more of those...
So is there any way then to adjust the zoning without inhibiting the future, the city's future potential for annexation?
You know, that's what we need to find.
So...
I, I, I'm going, I'm gonna go back to that, 'cause I, is the concern that, that there's gonna be a ring of houses around the towns, and it's gonna choke everybody off, or...
The, the, the problem is, the problem is the density is so is, is, um, kind of at that, at that magic point where it's, it's, uh, makes development of each one of those lots out of more dense, more densely, very difficult. When, when you got a three-acre lot, there's a, there's obviously a certain distance between each house.
Sure.
There's a cost, as, as everyone knows, I think Ernie, you've kind of touched on it a little bit, to extend water and sewer. The farther away each of those houses is, each one of those houses has to cover the cost of that distance.
So you wanna make it more dense within this?
I wanna make it more, at, at least my, my concept is to make it more dense, but, but...
Relax the regulations near the towns?
No.
Now, you can't do that.
No, because that, that, that creates a situation where it's, where it's, it's kind of at a point where it's too expensive to extend the services, and the developer won't, won't buy a three-acre, if, if they want to actually do some serious developing, they need more than one house with three acres, they need, you know, two or three of those in a row, and trying to convince two or three landowners in a row to all sell at the same time, so that then they've got a ten-acre, or fifteen-acre, or twenty-acre, whether it is parcel, but then they can actually do some internal streets and, you know, have city lots.
Well, the biggest one that you're gonna run into is, uh, you have to, like on a three-acre lot, there's not enough room to put a lagoon in, you have to put in a septic system. And then you also gotta be so far away from the neighbor's line, and that's the big thing with the long narrow lot, because you don't have enough square footage in width, you, it's all in length. And the only way to get that to work is, you might be running a hundred and fifty feet of line out before you can even hit, put your septic tank in, and then you've gotta go off with at least one to two branches off of your septic system to have enough room to let it flow for the water system, you know, the...
Your perking, the percolator.
Yeah, so that's, I, that's why I would try to stay to five acres and not do the three, because then it makes, makes it all more feasible and...
Right, is from a cost standpoint you're talking about? From a county, a county regulation standpoint? Because those are two different things in my mind.
Well...
And we're talking about minimums, not, it has to be three acres, right?
I, I would say the minimum ought to be five acres, because if you don't watch how the sewer's put in...
Well, we already have three acres, that's our minimum right now.
I know, but they're, but they're having, they're having a lot of trouble with, uh, on the older places, uh, right now, they're having trouble getting it to pass, to get new sewer put in, because they've gotta go in and dig all their old sewer up, with the old cast iron pipe and stuff, and to get it to regulate now, they're having to go in and, and put it more, you know, area to do it.
So are those aspects, are those the responsibility for us to plan around, or is that the responsibility of the purchaser to be able to navigate?
Well, it's kind of a flip of the coin, real.
Yeah, it sounds like a cost thing to me. It sounds like you're, you're, if you're giving, bringing up good points, like this is what makes it feasible, this has to be feasible unless it's five acres. Well, we're not saying that five acres is not, we're not saying that three acres is feasible, we're just saying the minimum that we'll do is three acres, and that's a difficult thing to change, like you said, because we're already there.
And it's been there for a long time, because I know right now where a lot of them that are on the three-acre plots going west on One Forty-Second, they've been there since the early seventies. And they sold a lot of them, because that's the road that goes out to the old racetrack, and they were three-acre plots, and most of them were built between here and the street out there from, from the road, but now the trouble is, most of them, the older places are vacant or junk, you know, and they're having trouble with buying them now to get them up to par on that three acres, because they're so narrow and long, because most of them are two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty feet wide, and they're anywhere from six hundred to six hundred and fifty feet in depth. And, you know, that's, that's the trouble that they're running into, because it's not real flat land, and to dig, they've got, if they put the, where they end up with the tank and all that, they're down anywhere from twelve to eighteen feet to the lines.
But that, that might be a site-specific issue and not, so, I mean, you're saying we need to limit the entire county, or the entire project area, you know, the woodwork? And there are, there may be places that three acres, they could get enough of that, the percolation or whatever, so why would they not be allowed to do the three acres if, you know, maybe there's some place that three acres won't work because of that, but there probably are places that three acres would work.
Well, there, there's gotta be, because right there where that Banner Creek Road is, them aren't even on three-acre plots, all them brand-new houses on the west side from Highway seventy-five to Q...
But they're on city sewer. That's, if you go into it, like Jonathan's talking about in those areas, if you go into a, a density smaller than three acres, you would have to then have public utilities. You couldn't do individual septic systems on, less than that. So that's what you're, if, if you put those three-acre developments around a city, and then they came in later and tried to annex, if they couldn't without, but they can already do that, people can already subdivide that. So I'm just looking to make it easier. And if you look at the subdivisions around Holton, the, what call it, really?
Well, there's one of them off west, and there's some other ones.
The one, I mean, here around just on the edge, but it's county, but the one at the golf course is in, I don't know whether it's in the city or in county. It's county.
Yeah, including the new one that was just built like fifteen years ago, that's the Knox Houses.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
South of the park.
That's county?
That's county.
Okay, so those are, those aren't, those three acres a piece?
No, it's plenty.
No, no, there's not.
But it does have city sewer.
Does it?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's in an hour.
I'm thinking that it does not, and the, and the only reason I am, because it's not on the city limits.
It's very outside.
But do they have city, city sewer?
There's something city, I think the electricity is city.
City electric.
And maybe not the sewer. It just depends, but there's some places that have city elec, electric, but not the city sewer.
So there's the, and, and those small lots, I mean, those are less than major, I would say, maybe, maybe they're not, but they're able to get septic up there, I mean, individual.
Three acre, it varies depending on the...
Are they three?
So we, we currently have the regulations that allows that, right, within, right outside of the cities?
Yeah, rural subdivisions.
You just, you just have to come to us, and we canceled on a guy the other day because we couldn't be here, and now he's another thirty days out on the property. The...
You're, you're wanting to simplify where the zoning administrator can approve that those lots can...
If you fall into that overlay district, and you walk in and say, I wanna put this into three-acre lots, you can say, check these boxes and we'll make it happen, rather than making them come to us and change the zoning.
So to me, there would, that sounds like it, there would need to be another zoning district for those specific areas. That's what that sounds like to me.
You'd have to get rid of the density. You'd have to get rid of the density.
You create your own density for that district. But then again, you, you rezone it, it's gonna have to go before the planning commission.
Yeah.
Unless there's something written in about approval by the zoning administrator, which I, I haven't seen yet.
I'm just looking for, when somebody comes into your office, instead of being told, this is what you can't, this is what you can, and this is what we can do to, you know...
Well, if they, if they wanna go through the steps to do it and do it right, there's, there's not a harm in it, but they also gotta know that it's not gonna be guaranteed that it will pass by going through the right steps.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is if we make certain areas to eliminate that, eliminate us from that process.
Do we really wanna do that?
I don't.
I'm not certain we want it under the...
I don't want it.
But we would wanna give up, um, a site, because we're, we're, we're kind of the intermediary, if you will, for, for the county, between the county and the landowners.
So is it, is the other guy, is the holdup is because of their, that it's too dense or something? The, the, you know, the units in twenty acres, is that what their...
He has, he has a forty-acre parcel.
That's forty, and he wants to divide it into four acres.
Four parcels. He can only, he could limit to two, yeah.
And so the, and the reason is because of the density?
Yes.
Okay, so then we should, we should reduce the requirement for the density?
Well, now, obviously, what we're talking about here is, is catering to one particular in this case.
And it's a certain one particular...
What does this one fall, what's the address on it, does it fall into, right?
We're not trying to avoid that on the other project we're talking about.
Avoid the, the density?
Catering to one client.
That's a, a...
Well, this is also checking for, this is for housing element, yeah, I can't blame it.
The density isn't...
Nine seven seven nine S route.
Extreme. One unit for twenty acres.
Nine seven seven S route, or nine seven seven nine S route.
Why is he not wanting to go through the process that we already have in place?
He is.
He is.
But we canceled on him the other day, because we couldn't be here. Just the same as the, the guy that came before the appeals board on a setback, that was, you know, just his conversation, but all he wanted to do was move his, his building five feet closer to the property line. His neighbor agreed to it, but he had to come before the appeals board to get that enacted. And he showed up and assigned on the door set, or he'd seen something that the meeting was canceled, he assumed that the appeals meeting was canceled as well as the planning meeting, so he thought, here I am, gonna be another thirty days out, and I wanna get concrete poured, and I wanna do that, you know. In that instance, I would like to have seen a way that if they can come into the Fraser's office and they say, well, we're gonna notify all the neighbors within a thousand feet, and they can go and get those neighbors, and if they sign off on it, they come back and say, here, I mean, it's a property setback.
Well, the appeals, the appeals court where this one got canceled, he went to the appeals meeting, 'cause I know who we're talking about, an appeals meeting, and he had proof where the neighbor and everybody okayed it in written paper, and they, they allowed it.
Right. I don't see, I mean, as, out of appeals, I don't see that we would really, if the neighbors are okay, that you deny anybody on a setback.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a different subject, but this guy, this one is wanting to subdivide or to put four ten-acre plots on forty acres, he has to come and apply for his own, and he applied forty-five days ago, and had to get it put on, I mean, I don't know how long, whenever it was, had to get it put on our agenda, and get the thirty days notice and all of that, so it's publicized, and then we get there and we can't show up, even though we have nine members, you know, just for whatever reason, but now we put that, put him off for another thirty days in moving forward. So if, if he falls into the area that I'm talking about, then we simplify that process, and it doesn't come before us.
Well, the case office can, can go ahead and grant that.
I mean, I, I, I think the whole idea of, of reducing the density is a good idea in general, regardless of the, the timing of this guy and what, 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 what his timeframe is. I think that if you have forty acres and you wanna chop it up and, and sell it, and have people build houses there, then who's, why, why are we, we stopping from doing that?
Well, technically, across the road and just a little way south of this property, they've already allowed ten-acre plots being built in there now. And basically, we're only talking, what, three-quarters of a mile north of Ninety-fourth Street towards Hoyt, 'cause that's where that range of ground is.
Is that just south of Hoyt?
No, that rest would be south of Hoyt, if you could talk. We can talk about changing the twenty to a ten, which would solve this particular situation.
But, yeah...
In, in, in one way.
I don't, yeah, and it's only in certain areas. I don't wanna go countywide, you know, I, I agree with the twenty, in certain, but that's where I'm just talking in certain areas.
It's a overlay district.
It doesn't matter who the landowner is, it's one, it's one unit for twenty acres right now, so it doesn't matter who owns the property, right? So why does it need to be one for its one, ten? I mean, it's one for a lot, it's three acres. You build a house, and you built one, that's good.
At least my, and I could be wrong, but my sense of that is to try to preserve the rural character of the county, not to widen the county up or large parts of the county into smaller lots.
Right, but within...
Unless they're city lots, which is, doesn't really attract...
It's, you know, it's in the first couple pages of this, in order to preserve the rural aspect of the county, to not do that everywhere.
Yeah, it, it needs to be, it needs to come in front of us to look at it, to see if it's feasible to go to anything, you know, and where he's zoned out and chose it for the ten-acre prob, on the deal, I don't see a problem with the ten-acre stretchers on that forty acres that he's got. But that's my own opinion.
Is that within the seventy-five tier, highway tier?
That'd be within, it's ninety-seven, seventy-nine S's, as mentioned, that would be within that, um, one and a half miles.
That's where that little blue squared, right, that third, wanting to put the four ten-acre plot in.
That's within a mile and a half of the highway.
Yeah, highway's right there, each one of those large squares is a mile.
And so he's doing the ten acres, 'cause that's what our regulations make it easy to do.
Yeah.
But if we had it in different, you may be able to make them smaller, and sell off six lots instead of four.
I would say the way that the ground sets, if you went to three acres, he would have to put a road through the center to make the three acres, for the ten acres, you could put four side-by-side, narrow, long.
That's where it's site, site-specific, is that for us to decide?
I would say that...
Is that for us to decide what we do, what you do with your property?
Yeah, I would say probably though, for what he wants, I would leave it at ten. From the square, see how square it is?
But we're talking about making proposed language change that applies to everybody in the county for one specific situation.
I think it ought to be set up until.
If I'm trying to avoid, you know, corrections, we should.
When we talk about things, it's important to think about the county specific, the county as a whole, rather than focus on specific situations that we know. Some of those may guide our thought processes, but we never wanna get sucked into a conversation that is going to keep us from moving forward by focusing on one, fixing one person's concern when we need to talk about the whole county impact.
Well, the, what I'm getting at, though, is if you look, basically, within a, a mile, less than a mile, there are ten acre plots right down on the corner right there, to the right. And then if you look right above there, where the, he's got, there's a couple ten acre plots there that joins that right there. See those, and then look right straight across the road, there were ten acre plots.
Right.
Up on that north.
What I'm saying is if you took that, all the the ten acre long, those people own, you know, a quarter mile back, and they may not need that. So you could draw a line through the middle of that, sell off the front half, and the property owner could maintain the rural part of that, agriculture part of that, on that back end. They may have the grand easement to get back there, but you wouldn't have to take all of that eighty acres out of production to build houses, because right now, those people own ten acres and it's not really enough to hunt on, it's not enough to, that pond is divided in three places.
So let, let me, uh, this forty acres, if he wanted to keep thirty acres of it and split off the ten and then do rural residential on that ten acre and make those smaller parcels, as long as those parcels are eighty thousand square feet or more, that would still fall into rural residential. So that, that is an option. You know, it, it just depends on the scenario, like what somebody is wanting to do. I don't know that he is wanting to keep any of this, that's why he's trying to sell on ten acre parcels. If he wanted to keep some as agricultural, then he could do the split, right, split off the ten, move that to rural residential, and then go from there.
The, the, I would say is, the reason that they're not is because if he can sell a ten acre lot for a hundred thousand dollars, or if he sold ten acres for a total of a hundred thousand dollars and then kept the back, there's not much value left in that. I'm saying, just to protect, just, just to say that that person still has a rural lifestyle, they would keep, if they wanted to, they would keep it. But he's selling the ten acres, because that's the most profitable thing to do.
Surely, if it was divided up, he'd give a lot more than that same amount for that ten acre piece.
That's what I would think. Um, again, everything is, is possible that we're at, that I'm talking about within our idea of regulations, I'm just trying to, is there certain areas that we can make it simple, to eliminate some steps to get there? And maybe it's not, it's not worth it.
Everybody's talking about needing students in a school district, and I agree, you've got a declining enrollment. But when we're talking about half million dollar houses out here, the average age, from what I've read, of the first time home buyers, around thirty-nine to forty years old. Kids are almost grown by then, so as good as those taxes these buildings might bring in, and it's nice to have them, it's not gonna help the school districts very much.
Well, the average.
Or if you were, if you were to, I mean, granted, building houses down around the Hoyt area is not gonna help the whole school system. Which was his general point. I mean, say you took and did that around Hoyt, there may be some people that would move out of Hoyt and build a new house, which would help the tax base, and then that would open up homes in Hoyt for people to move into.
A cheaper house hopefully in Hoyt, but.
Because right now, every house is full.
Jonathan's concerned about not being able to annex those areas, because you don't wanna stop that, you don't wanna block that off. The other problem I see is, of course, that's a paved road, but every time we get these out in the country, they're gonna, we've already got all the side roads in the county, two lanes, when they used to be one and a half lanes. Gravel costs a lot more to maintain all these roads. Um, we've got more law enforcement issues with people all over the county, more so than with agricultural land.
But you can look right around the Hoyt area right now, in the last five years, if going south or going towards Banner Creek and north of Banner Road or sixteen, within the Banner area, they've built a lot of high dollar homes, but them people are wanting ten, at least ten acres that they're building these high price homes on, because they don't want that junk house right beside, and I, I don't have a problem with that.
And I guess it comes down to do we want to grow or do we want to stay where we're at?
And how, how we want to grow, both of those, you have two questions.
Well, the average, just look at the average rental house from Hoyt to Hoyt. You're talking a two bedroom home starts at seven hundred, and that's not much of a house, a two bedroom home. And apartments right now in Hoyt, two bedrooms are eight hundred and up. So, I mean, it's one of those things right now. I would say, to me, my own opinion, I would think the guy that wants a ten acre deal, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because the, the people that are gonna buy the ten acres are gonna put nice ones on. And yes, we're not gonna, but the average family, people with kids can afford a ten acre house. And technically, they can't even afford a three acre house, because you're looking a three bedroom, fifteen hundred square foot house right now, you're talking minimum three hundred and fifty thousand just to get it built. And then you're gonna go on, on three acres, that's gonna cost you a minimum of fifty to seventy thousand by the time you put your utilities and stuff on it. So, you know, that's, that's where the general public is standing. And to go in and put in lower housing units, you'd have to go like they did them apartments right outside of, on the south side of town and stuff like that.
And that's, that's exactly why, uh, real affordable housing, rental apartments, those really need to be in cities. Because it's much easier to provide the infrastructure at the density that they, that is needed to make those profitable to build in the first place.
Well, and they, and they build houses right there, this side of this apartment, and even on the low end deals, them two bedroom houses with the garage on are still anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand dollars a month.
So, thinking about what you're talking about, and I'm, I'm concentrating this around the cities, because that's where people are gonna most likely try to be. So what if you would move it to the, the overlay is a certain distance from the city limits out to?
I would be more in favor of that, because it would help, it would at least allow a zone.
Because those people could go through the process to, if they're inside that buffer, they can go through the process to change that to that zone. But if they're out, you know, if they're in that exterior buffer, then that, that process is simplified.
Right. Yeah, and if we, you know, for example, if we, if we modify the, obviously, we already have the, the zoning regulations that allow eighty thousand square feet per lot. You know, if they come to this body and go through our procedures, that's, that's a possibility. But we could, you know, we could look at lowering that twenty, you know, in that zone that you're talking about, you know, down to ten or something, some alternative number. That would still allow future subdivision, uh, once a city would reach that, that particular corridor. Which could be an island annexation, does everyone, let me just explain what an island annexation is. So you've got your, 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 your cities here, and you have a landowner out here that wants to do a development, you know, some, some distance. It could be a hundred feet, it could be half a mile, it could be a mile, whatever. That wants to do a denser development, no ways away. They can, the city can actually, can annex that under law with the approval of the county commission. And obviously, once the city annexes that, then, then the city is responsible for negotiating with them, which they would have already started. You know, utilities, streets, all those sorts of requirements. Um, there are ways for those, that infrastructure to be funded. Um, if there's an agreement with the city and the school district and the county on the tax revenue. Uh, there's a way to, to, with those three bodies' approval, uh, to designate a significant portion of the new tax revenue on that parcel, once the homes are built, to pay off the loan that the company would take out to pay for all that infrastructure. So there's a way, there's a way to do those sorts of things. So it could be, just if we have a zone out here, if there could still be this sort of thing, which I don't think would conflict with what you're proposing. Because it'd be up to the landowner.
Right.
And the potential developer, you know, to decide what route they want to, which makes the most financial sense for them. As long as we don't shut up all the, all of the land, and ten acres might be a good compromise.
Well, and, and the thing about this, the ten acres is in a certain area around the city, you know, like, say, a mile and a half. Then that way, they could go down to the three acres or the so many square feet to build on. And even though the way the taxes are right now, uh, you're still paying to the schools and everything else, whether you've got kids that are going to the school or not. So, I mean, it's still one of those deals, it's still gonna help the county out money wise and population wise, because right now, southern, southern Jackson County right now price per acre has inclines like you would not believe in the last three to five years, due to the people wanting out of the city itself. And it's, it's affecting even as far as may have. So, and it's starting to pick up over around Dennison, because I've checked on some ground over in there. But most of it is twenty acre plots that, you know, because they're coming in and they're building nice homes on. I'm, I'm talking thirty-four hundred thousand dollar homes. So it's one of those things, I think if it gets cut down to a smaller deal within a certain area of the town that they're building to, I think that they need to come to us and make sure that it's all right. That, that's my own opinion.
Okay, how does the tax work on, so say you have forty acres of A one A, and you divide that into two twenty acre plots to build a house on?
It's still A one A.
Yeah, no, it's still A one, so.
Yeah, it's still gonna be, um, ag use, kind of the house.
And then so changing the zoning to an R one or an R two, the ten acres, or what, how is that, is that still taxed at the use value?
Yes, it's, it's how it's used until a house goes on it.
Right, so when the house goes on it, is that, does the remainder of the ten acres?
It's still paid. It'll go to market value.
The whole of the ten acres will go to market with the second change.
So we have a problem too with the uses on that ten acres in rural residential. Like, you have to get a special use permit for ag buildings or, or whatever.
Like chicken coop.
You can have, they can have like, uh, like a couple of animals, but they can't have, it's not gonna, it has different restrictions.
So I guess what I'm saying is if you took that forty acres and made it a three acre lot, that entire forty acres would then go to market value?
Yeah, each lot, we need market value.
As opposed to the current twenty acres where only the house is the market.
Well, if it's, if it's, uh, because we have several rural subdivisions that have not been developed and probably have expired, but that use, as it is, is just ag use. Right, so it's, it's tech, right, it's, it's gonna be assessed at, you know, thirty percent on ag use value versus market value at eleven and a half, or twelve percent or eleven and a half percent assessment rating. So you're talking a couple hundred dollars or like eighty dollars versus a couple thousand in taxes.
Which I guess is where I'm, what I'm going after, is the, by allowing this, is going after the tax dollars. Because anything that can help offset my increases is.
Well, but the ten acre plot by agriculture versus the three acre plot versus agriculture is, it's still all on the price of the house that's on it and stuff like that.
Right, but I'm talking the land.
The land doesn't.
It does if you go to three acres.
It makes it, the land does make a difference, whether it's use value versus the market value, the market value is significantly higher than a use value, because the use value on some of them, depending on what it is, could be a couple hundred an acre where, uh, market value could be thousands. I mean, it's a, it's a massive, the assessment rates are different, but the, the, the cost difference is a lot too.
I, I just, my own personal opinion is, is I think that it ought to stay at ten acres that the, you know.
It's not at ten acres right now.
I know, if they get it brought in to get it cut down from the, from the twenty acres. It, it has to go in front of, to get it tough.
I think the, the current regulations, and I think you're talking about this, is three acres. But I don't see anything about ten acres. I think you're saying to take the twenty.
No.
Ten.
To density.
But that's where I'm saying is, we're saying in the, in certain areas that we're taking this body out of the mix, because in three years, this body could be completely different, it could be full of people who don't wanna see any houses.
Yep, yep.
And you, they're not gonna approve.
Any. That's right.
Zoning change.
That's why I would think that if, like the guy that's wanting the ten acre plot on his forty acres, I would say I'd rather see that than going in there and having to build a road and make sure that there's enough room to put a lagoon system on it, because a lot of places, they've narrowed them down so much that the average lagoon, you can't even put on, you have to go to a, a septic system. And then even with the septic system, you've got to be up to state specs, you've gotta run, it's more than one, you can run the one line into the tank. But you've gotta have a minimum of two to six coming out till the water can disintegrate without a leak.
Again, that's site specific. So if you're getting, if you're going to buy a three acre lot and you don't have to, you better check that out before you buy it, you may have to buy two lots in order to.
But the average, the average person right now that is buying ground to build on, they think that the guy's son has already made it till it's feasible.
So that piece then though, still lies back on the purchaser, and we can't concern ourselves with trying to get everything squared away to protect them, that's on, that's now their responsibility.
I, I understand. But that's why I'm saying that if we go to the ten acre plot, then we know even with the, with the community standards of Jackson County. even with the, with the community standards of Jackson County, that, that is feasible. Where if one person walks in and buys.
There again, we're policing and telling someone what they can do. By, we're saying that five acres may not work in this spot, but it will over here. But you can't do it over here because we, we saying that you can't do it over here. It's site-specific. If they go in and they wanna do this, they're gonna have to find out through Northeast Kansas Environmental whether that's gonna work.
Yeah, yeah.
And when they divide it up, that's not on.
It's feasible.
They have to do that with their building permit already.
Yeah.
So I don't think by trying to limit some people based on some other ones and maybe not able to do it, I don't think that's right.
So, so we, I feel like we have some kind of consensus on Highway 75, maybe not around the town, that, that we could be open to, to dropping the density from twenty to ten?
Yes.
So how does, how does that start to see?
Less, I mean, I'd, I'd go less too, I mean.
What would you go to?
People can already request a plat and they can go all the way down. So they, they can already do that. That's why I don't see a need to change that. We can change the twenty to a ten, but there's already a route in place.
Where they have to get it certified, it, it comes.
Right.
But that, that would avoid them having to come.
And why do you do that?
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
If you want them to have to, to be able to avoid this body if they wanna subdivide into three acre lots. That's a question for this body.
So we'll have to write something in there that separates the seventy-five from a mile and a half from the town in order to change that? So right now, they're considered, I mean, in this anyway, they talk about it. They say around established urban areas within one point five miles of US Highway 75 right away. Be considered US Highway Tier fifty-one.
I would, I would look at that HC district. Because it's, it's talking about US 75 and site plan requirements and which, you know, the site plan review by the planning commission and.
And, I mean, maybe, maybe the seventy-five corridor isn't, maybe we just go around the same.
Right, we'll come up with another definition for this special district. No, so you're on my end, there's gonna be an extra complication reservation on this right there, too.
So, so this is.
Within that mile and a half.
This HC district, this is pretty much right off the highway, right? This is a mile, this, this would be less than a mile and a half away. If it'd be anything, it's probably right on the highway.
Maybe it's decided that we don't wanna make any changes. I'm just stirring the conversation, I guess.
And that was the time to talk about, these sorts of things. So if you did what you're asking, then that would eliminate any notice to the people within a thousand feet, etc. As we've, so if they could come in at any time, is that my understanding?
Essentially, I guess, yeah. It's saying that it's allowed in areas.
I'm thinking that, that depending on how that's written, that would remove, let's see, they may, they may wanna subdivide. I'm, I'm, it's been a possibility we've had to deal with that.
I, I've never had to deal with a subdivision.
There's a public hearing requirement?
Um, I think there's a preliminary plat review.
Well, and there's a final plat review later, you know, after, after the one, right? But is there a public hearing requirement?
Because it would have to get changed, the zoning would have to get changed for that, so you'd have that.
Yeah, so it would be a public hearing. Yeah, so one of the things we wanna be careful about is, is removing anything that will re, or at least I think, removing the public hearing requirement. Because that's the time when the public is invited to come in and speak to this body in its entirety. Plus, you know, with the landowner or whoever has the proposal for the change. So that we can, we can evaluate, you know, include the public's comments and what we're thinking. And the landowner can, is proposing the change, has the opportunity to change their proposal. If they see something that, okay, the public has suggested this, I like that idea. I'm gonna go ahead and take, take some of that and include it.
Well, and it also worked until if someone is wanting to decline it being processed like that. So I still think that even, it should be brought up in front of this group or any group of the planning setup to put the final, you know, if they've walked through the walk to make sure everything is up to par, then it still gives the people one last vote in front of us to make sure that it's okay with everybody to move on. And I think that's only fair to everybody. Because seven people that are sitting here right now should not have jurisdiction over everybody around that property. To the point of not at least listening to the community on their standard, what they, what they think.
Another question might be, was that originally put in place because we know that every instance is going to be unique? And there may be some cases in the future where a request is made, where we may know a specific reason why that request could not happen? That we would need to review, that we probably couldn't write into.
Right, because we don't know until, yeah, until we come to that circumstance. Right, exactly.
See, and that, that would, that would make it visible by more of us looking at it instead of just saying, you know, you can go do this on this amount of ground without springing it in front of. And I think it still ought to be one of those step-to-step deals instead of just saying, well, you've got this much room, you can go ahead and do it.
Fair enough. To argue that point though, this is a body of volunteers, more or less. We may not have the exact knowledge. Whereas if you think in a school system, this is the thing that's baffling to me about this group. We are a group that gets to come together and make decisions, but we don't have someone who brings us recommendations, someone who's actually trained in that information. So if you are supposed to bring us recommendations and I didn't know it, please interject those at any time. In cities, you also have a city manager, kinda like a superintendent in a school district. They're deeply entrenched in the knowledge. They're supposed to bring the recommendation to the board, the board celebrates and then they vote. The county is the only one that I seem to know where you get some guidance, maybe, but you don't really have someone who is necessarily like the director for that group. So that's the counterpoint to that.
But that's why we have seven people here to do research on what they're wanting done. And I mean, I can tell you for myself, I do a lot of research on something before I give my word G or N. And that's, that's the biggest thing, that's why I brought up the seventy-five project. Because they have got it set up with the road situations and stuff like that. That you can't put like that eighty acres that's sitting right there south within a half a mile south on the west side of seventy-five. It's got one lane into it, well, you can only put one house on that eighty without coming in there and putting the road either to one thirty-four or one forty-two to create a, a drive until they're not going on to the highway messing with the highway traffic. And that's why they're on that big truck stop that the Indians are putting in there on one fiftieth. They went in and tried everything they could do to get it till it opened to the highway. And, and they said absolutely not because they're not gonna have that construction problem with traffic going in and out of there.
Yeah, that's why they, yeah, why, why they got the interchange in the first place is to control that for safety reasons. But to your point, Trevor, from this, this respect, this respect to either one of you ladies, is, yeah, larger organizations will have a, a degree of person who is a professional community planner. Which is not something the county commission has yet approved in the budget.
Correct.
But doubt that, the Jackson, at some point will reach that, reach that point sooner or later. So it might benefit from having that done sooner.
I, I wanna go back to what we talked about earlier. We don't have any growth, much growth. We're trying to loosen up these regulations. So we're not telling landowners what they can and cannot do without having to, you know, over-regulate them. I mean, they own the land, they should be able to have the wherewithal to, to chop it up how they want, within reason. But, and again, it's trying to reduce the over-regulation for a landowner to, to split up his property. So for more houses, that's all we're trying to do. So all the things that could happen because of that, I'm not sure. But we don't have a lot of development going on right now. There's a lot more than you realize.
Yeah, there were four hundred improvements that the county threw no follow-through on.
There, there's one.
Didn't, didn't, didn't know about.
Some of them weren't.
Well, I mean, but.
Well, I think there was one in Mayetta and one just outside.
I think I did, I was.
One of that group. I'm not gonna say. Yeah, so there is more, yeah, is there, what, is there an amount of growth that we want? Yes or no? I'm not, I'm not asking you, but that's, that's, yeah, we may not be getting exactly what we're wanting as you're exactly suggesting.
Thirty, maybe more than that, I put like fifty, so.
Is there, is there a way to streamline the ability to get these things done? I mean, I don't know the exact nature of the thing though. But is there areas where the county could cause it to be easier for people to do this? Instead of a farmer out here knows nothing about it, trying to, you know, educate himself on the whole process? Is there a way that this group or the county as a whole can streamline the process to still fit in what we currently have?
Right, to accomplish the county's.
To accomplish the goals. And not negatively affect the cities.
Right.
It's kinda the nature of planner, if you're talking about. But is there a way to streamline the rights that we have? Is there, are there any holdup points that should be adjusted or could be adjusted? That would not affect people's rights of being notified what's happening?
Kate, do you, do you, you're the point person, obviously, for those calls that come in.
Yeah. If people call and say, hey, this is what I wanna do, then it's a, well, you would need to rezone to this district in order to do what you're planning to do. And then they would apply for that and then come before you all. So if it works out well, you've got a thirty day, twenty day, twenty-five day wait to get that decision made before they get permitting and, and all of that done. So when you're saying streamline, do you want the, the process to go faster for them?
I just didn't know if there's any pickups with educating the people on what is needed. I mean, just, to most people, you gotta get resoned, they have no clue where to start, so.
Well, the, the case that you guys have with that DEH, he didn't have it, I mean, the survey was filed and I saw the survey and I said, he can't do that. And so we got a hold of the surveyor, got his phone number and contacted him and told him that this would not be allowed in Jackson County. And then that's how that process started.
Well, yeah, what would happen in that case is they, they would split it and it would, they would sell it off to these people and this, the, the parcels would be non-compliant parcels. Because they didn't go through that zoning process, right, to get it done. So they wouldn't be able to build a residence.
No, I'm not talking about not going through zoning process, but just.
To inform the public on it. So we have signs at each of the highways as you're coming into town, so there, there is that. We, we were talking about doing flyers when we did valuation notices. So every property owner would get, this is a zone county if you're like, you know, that kinda thing. But, I mean, aside from that, having a website that we have, I don't know.
Depends, depends on the landowner taking initiative to check, which they don't always. As you, as you were exactly saying. Obviously, you've, you've, you've talked to all the real estate agents, not just here in Jackson, but the ones that settled the deal in Jackson County, Topeka, you know, wherever they are from.
They know, but you get new realtors and, and.
Right, old line.
That, that's kind of a.
That, to me, that's kind of their responsibility too, as a realtor, knowing what each county can do, so.
We had a call from a realtor just asking that I have a potential buyer for this land and what can I do with it? Is this, would this be allowed, would this not be allowed? So I mean, I think generally they do check.
The good ones will, right. That twenty-five day turnaround that you're describing, that's actually, that is, that is very quick.
Yep.
So that, that's not, there's not a problem with the twenty-five days. It's, that, that, part of it's, is government, and this is at least my perception, all governments have the, have trouble communicating what their rules are and what, with the people that are interested in doing something. It's not, it's not specific to Jackson County, it's not specific to Kansas, it's not specific to the United States. It's just something that is inherent, inherently a difficulty.
So the website has the zoning regulations. It has a comprehensive plan. The solar working documents, those are all on there. So we try and keep it, you know, so they can access this information at any time. And it is a searchable document, so.
Well, and you can take the average person, once they buy the ground and they talk to the title abstract people, they will be able, they research all of that. Because right now, the average closing time on a house that's being either sold or property is put up to sixty days. Anywhere from thirty to sixty days, because I just bought one, I know. And, and it's just like the city of Mayetta has got more, like the place I bought's got a trailer house on it. And then once you take that trailer house off in the city of Mayetta, you cannot put another trailer house on it. You can build a structure on it, but you cannot put another trailer house on it. And Holton, right now, has got it set up that on, to put a trailer back into like a court, that's these trailer courts that are in Holton. They have to have pitch ropes on them and everything else. They cannot longer have flat ropes and stuff like that. So I mean, there's all kinds of ordinances, that's like this ten acres this guy is setting up. If he would have sold him, technically, he's liable for the money and everything to give these people their money back. Because he sold the ground without okaying it through the planning board to do that.
Do we ever have cases where people go through the process, like you've just described? And then, once they get through that to do the next phase, they would have to go through another process to come before a committee?
And it could be if they were gonna do like a special use permit for a single wide.
Yeah.
And there, I mean, there would be instances where that could happen, yes. Because a single wide that has to come before the planning commission. If somebody's gonna put a single wide in on that property.
Double wide, no.
Right.
Uh, single wide, yes.
Or if they were gonna do some kind of use on that property that's considered special use.
Seasonal dwelling, I mean, there are special use cases that if they wanted to do something additional. Seasonal dwelling. I mean, there are special use cases that if they wanted to do something additional, they would have to. For the rezoning part, no, just if they're wanting to build on it, then they would have to go through the building process. So, very good. But that doesn't come before you guys.
The single wide mobile home brings up another topic that I disagree with. That it, it has to be twenty years older, newer to be put on. Say you come in, put one, put a fifteen-year-old mobile home on a property, get a special use permit. Five years later, six years later, you decide to sell that property with the mobile home on it. It's no longer allowed. So they'd have to take that, I mean, you couldn't sell that property as a, am I right?
It could stay there. That mobile home could stay there. It wouldn't be allowed to move anywhere else in the county. They wouldn't be able to move it.
They wouldn't be allowed to get a special use because after the change, transfer of ownership, they would have to, the new owner would have to apply for a special use for that mobile home. It doesn't stay with the property.
It's not being brought into the county at that point, right? Is that what it is?
No, based on this, this information in here, wherever it's.
Well, that, that would, depending on how that special, that, uh, single wide is being used. If it's being brought in as a hardship kind of situation, it would go before the appeals board. And it could be brought in with another house. Say you have five acres, ten acres, and they needed to bring that in to care for a parent or a child. Look, they would get a special use for a hardship case. That single wide would have to move off and they would no longer using it for that purpose. In a case where they just want to bring a single wide in on five acres, they would have to get a special use permit. The planning commission can determine that that could stay there. But if it ever needed to leave, it couldn't move to another location in Jackson County. So, you as a planning commission would need to make that clear in the acceptance of that special use.
At the beginning.
Yeah.
What I was basing that on was in that, the file that we have.
Right.
The letter from the appraiser at the time in twenty seventeen specifically stated, if that, if you sold the property and that trailer house was over twenty years old, it cannot then apply for a new special use. Meaning, the new owner has to come and apply for a special use to keep that trailer house there.
And that was in the, the acceptance or the approval letter? That's what was written in there? Those were the conditions?
Isn't every special use permit expiring when you sell the property?
I'm, I'm only talking about the age limit.
Oh, oh, you're saying, okay.
That word, why is that twenty years a thing? I mean, why can't you have a forty-year-old mobile home?
Well, it depends. I've got one that I just bought and it was put in there in nineteen sixty-eight. And when I checked everything, there, that did not apply to that trailer house.
It was grandfathered in.
It was grandfathered in.
It's in the city too, right? Yours?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is different than mine.
So, this new packet doesn't have, left neither packet of health because I didn't think we needed, but I just wanted to talk about that. I mean, why do we have that twenty-year restriction on there?
We can make some guesses. If the county is concerned about deteriorating mobile homes. We don't need one more type of structure that's deteriorating.
We're an HOA. Tell, tell somebody to think, you can't live in that house even though you can't afford a new one.
Problem is that it, the effect that it has on the other properties in there. So, I'm just guessing.
The, the biggest thing I wanted to say is, if it's already there, why would you have to take it out just because it's over twenty years old? If a new owner can't, if a new owner can't apply for a special use.
They can apply. If it's there, stay there, right? As long as it stays there.
Not away that letter.
Off of there, like they wouldn't be able to move it.
You can grandfather it in.
So this special use is only good for the current property owner. If either the land or the manufactured home changes owners since the special use expires, then the new owner would need to apply for a new special use permit.
Yes.
For example, if the home was sold after the manufactured home turned twenty years old, the new owner would not be able to obtain a new special use permit and the home would need to be moved off the property. That's insane. The house is already there. Why would that new owner?
What, what is it?
That was a letter from Jason Clay Camp to Carl Meadows.
I'm just curious to go over that screen.
From that last, oh, that's a whole one.
Well, that was a hardship, that was a hardship case. That's why on that one, you have like, it's five or ten acre parcel, okay? They brought this in to take care of a parent with another house there. So that, that was a condition that they put on that hardship, which is, is pretty typical for a hardship.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify because that doesn't make sense to me to.
Because it was a hardship and.
Right, sorry, normal special use, that's why that was.
Is that provision still in there, but not renewed until it's over twenty years old?
Well, it's whatever you guys said for zoning.
That's a, that's a condition.
I was thinking it was in the group somewhere, but.
That, yeah, it's probably in definitions or, or somewhere.
Well, it's under like A1A, uh, special uses.
Manufactured homes. He, um, he used to have a pitched roof on a permanent foundation, um, less than twenty years old. I think that may be in the definitions.
I guess the, the age thing is the same for me. If it's.
If it's, if it stays on the property, it's fine. If, if it moves to a different property, because there's, there's a few people that have put a manufactured home single wide. You guys are going to build a house at some point, but for currently, they just wanted something to live in until they get to that point. And so they.
And it, and it's usually on a deal like that for a year.
They just wouldn't be able to move it to another parcel of the county if it's more than twenty years old. They would have to move it out of their money. So, they were explained when they did that that they, if, if their intention was to move it later, that they would have to do so before it's twenty years old.
I mean, it just goes to affordable housing and if I have a parcel of land that I can get a twenty-five-year-old mobile home for free, but I can't use it, I can't put it in. And what are we protecting?
Special use permit.
No, you can't. It's over twenty years old.
Oh, maybe I have hardship to lay it off.
It, it's still all on how you, how you walk through the process. Because it's still up to people to do that, whether they allow it, like on an appeal or something like that versus it's absolutely not.
Well, it's in our regulations that if it's over twenty years old, it is not able to be applied for.
But you can still appeal that deal.
So, under, um, on page ten in the definitions, it gives all the manufactured home residential design. And I think that's what it states in the zoning regulations, is residential design manufactured homes.
Yeah, I might, the whole thing, I just don't know why we put a limit at twenty years. Because we're talking two thousand and five right now.
Yeah.
And there's probably plenty of solid mobile homes that are built in the eighties that are probably better than the ones built in twenty-ten.
Then start regulating, you're regulating in the seventies.
Yeah, mobile homes versus manufactured homes.
There's a difference, right?
Yeah.
In what?
Mobile homes versus manufactured homes.
Mobile homes come in on the earth, come in with their own.
They both do.
They both do.
They both do.
It's brought in or manufactured elsewhere.
Uh.
But, right, but.
It's how, the quality of the build.
Right. My house.
Far as nineteen seventy-four.
Is a manufactured home. It does not have its own axes, but it was built in the shed.
So a modular?
Modular.
Yeah.
But a mobile home.
That's a different standard.
Is a metal frame, has its own axles.
So, manufactured home by this would not include a modular because that is a stick-built home, built in a factory, brought in on a trailer, moved off the trailer onto a foundation.
Right.
So, manufactured home by this standard is something that is going to have a title tied to it. Whether it's single wide or a double wide.
I'm just looking at costs for today's generation than the next generation. I mean, living in a camper or living in a single wide mobile home might be the only portable option that they have. Our county does not allow it.
So, maybe the thought should be allowing a variance then for a certain age and they would have to provide proof of condition.
You mean, add in for that?
Uh, so, right now, a variance is just for setbacks, right? Or, um, hardship case or that kind of thing. So, I would say that if you're, if you're wanting to change the age, either, what, change it in the definitions? Right? Because isn't that where it states the?
It's only in seventeen A on page twenty.
Look at page forty-one. It talks about disallowing mobile homes built before modern code.
Yeah, that would be prior to nineteen seventy-six.
Which page?
Set four.
Forty-one. And it's, it's more about future land development and agriculture. But it, it, it talks about the difference between mobile homes and allowing manufactured homes built under the high code. Maybe that was the idea.
Yeah, not allowing mobile homes.
That code was nineteen seventy-six, which is.
Okay.
Almost concurrent with the.
Which is in the.
County's.
Your forty-one and not the same forty-one you have?
Are you in a comprehensive plan?
You've got these four.
I'm in, I'm in regs, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, look at page ten, definitions there.
Got them compliant?
In the.
The manufactured home versus mobile.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Modular on there.
Yeah.
So what do we need to get drawn up here until, until I notice we're running out of time if we stick to the eight o'clock deal?
Yeah, we, we won't, we won't just have one of these work sections, I don't think, on, on, on them. We'll have, we'll have, we'll have at least one, one more, you know, to continue with the business that we've not yet finished.
But I, I think on, my own opinion, on anything over a mile and a half to two miles away from a town like Holton, Circleville, Holger, whatever, need to be set up on a, a ten acre plot and then unless they can come and prove what they're gonna do and then it could be okay. In my.
So you want to make it more stringent?
Well, it.
No, that'd be, it's currently torn.
Yeah, that'd be less.
That'd be dropping that in that certain area.
In the, in the, in the agriculture area.
That's without a zoning change.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is dropping down to ten.
That would be saying something that their office could do. You're, in this zone, the density is ten acres instead of twenty. Outside that zone, it's still twenty.
So if they're within that, that buffer area, if somebody does a survey and, and deeds it to whomever, then we can issue building permits for that general buffer area without it being non-compliant.
I, I still trying to figure out there between the rural density development and conservation tiers. Because they all call for, the only one that calls for more than three acres is the, is the, uh, is, is agriculture residential.
That's where you'd have to go into the zoning areas.
Okay.
And then the zoning, what, the way each parcel is zoned, so if it's zone A1A, the density.
Okay, I just need to get into there. Okay. Stuff in a comprehensive plan.
Well, and I thought they were all the same until I found out that they were actually separate. This is where, I mean, you hear the twenty-one, page twenty-one, section four.
So with that in mind, would that become an overlay district in your mind?
Would that be in this little unit?
Probably create a new overlay district. And if it still falls within the intent of the comprehensive plan is something you would want to keep in mind as well.
So where is this overlay district you're contemplating? I thought, Ernie, you're talking about county wide. Just a minute, we're going to run a version. You were talking about several things. One, one is, you know, going out from each of the, from the cities and we can define whether it's just the cities along seventy-five or it's just from Holton South, um, or it's all non. Um, you know, creating an area at the beginning, a mile and a half-ish somewhere. Um, and then going out, you know, ways farther, wherever that's extra, you know, a couple miles, whatever that distance is. And kind of creating a ring around each, there's been discussion of whether we want to do that just in the, basically the highway corridor, um, and then keeping everything else outside of that, the current twenty level, twenty minimum level. So that would allow people in certain areas to go ahead and drop it to ten if they wish. And I think we need all the considerations. But that's, at least that's my understanding of, in a nutshell, of some of the options we've talked about.
So what happens between that buffer ring and the.
Say the twenty, say the twenty plus, they can divide by, you know, five hundred. Five hundred subdivision, right, five hundred subdivision.
So there's going to be a, how many, how many miles then on that buffer?
Yeah, how, how wide?
Holdout.
Yeah, how wide? We'd have to, we'd have to go for that in several cities, in several, two or five miles apart. You know, so that, that, made it a, what, made it a void of five.
Well, it's the same way with Circleville and Holger. They're like five, six miles apart. And what it will do is if you go a mile and a half off of beach one, that's still going to leave a big area, basically, to hold for timber ground, agriculture, whatever. Because if we go, say, five miles, then that puts a connect, you know, over sixty percent of Jackson County to the next town. So I think if a person would just, you know, use a mile and a half bumper, then that would still make it work for the whole county.
I'm going to suggest two miles.
Two miles width, two miles width for the zone or perhaps two miles?
A two-mile radius.
Okay.
For the city?
Yeah. Simply because that gets to the county line from, from Hoyt. Granted, that hits the corner of the reservation that made it, but, you know, they're already limited by the reservation area. So, the reservation has their own zoning.
Well, technically from Maeda to the end of the red, it's a mile.
Right. I'm saying that mainly the two, two miles would, in those two towns would move, would.
Be less in certain locations.
Yeah, but it'd be to the east. I mean, our rules don't matter on the reservation, so.
So you're talking a mile and a half and then an additional two miles past that? So you're talking a mile and a half and then an additional two miles past that?
No.
Well.
I wasn't saying the interior buff, I don't know that the, we go a mile and a half at the interior. I was just thinking a half a mile. You know, the interior ring that Jonathan's talking about. I mean, I don't see, I mean, and, and future boards can change that as well. We look at this every year. But I don't see that the cities are going to need to go beyond a half a mile in the next 20 years.
Well, right now the city of Holton's grown faster than that, especially south. Because see, if you look.
Not the city limits, they're not annexing south.
I know, but they're, they're not, they're building heavy thousands.
Right, but the reason for creating that interior zone would be to allow the city to annex and.
Yeah, I, I, well, I, the half is not, at least as far as I'm concerned, half is not sufficient, a half a mile. It needs to be at least, you know, a mile, mile and a half.
Well, then you've just completely taken away the point of Hoyt. Hoyt's a mile and a half to the county line. And.
No, shorter than that.
It's two miles.
Yeah, it's about, yeah.
All of three.
Right, that mile and a half.
One 10 to 102 and then 94. So it's two miles to the county line.
Right, right. So that still allows, allows some, some space there, as you said.
Which, that's the area that I'm targeting with this change.
Well, on that.
By putting that interior buffer at that, then we're not changing anything in that area.
Actually it would because that, you know, from a, from a hundred and tenth to 94th is two miles.
But you're saying there's a mile and a half interior buffer that doesn't change.
Which would take it to 98. So it would still leave a half mile there on the north side of 94th. Uh, now there is this, Hoyt does have a small little potential down Old 75 for little ways. But that, that, that little potential is very narrow in the city limits.
I just don't see needing, the city's going to annex out that far.
This is probably the wrong body to ask, but when was the last time inland was annexed for a city?
To be good about 27 years ago. Does the city of Holman annex the industrial park?
Right.
Northern town.
Mayetta was, Mayetta has done, uh, four or five annexations in the last 10, 12 years or so. Right, including the new Dollar General, that's one of the.
And the Mayetta was gone.
And Mayetta's in the process of doing another annexation, so.
Which, are you still, you're in the city council there?
No, no, it's not legally possible.
Well, so do you both.
Correct.
But you were.
Yes. So, yeah, to, to your, to your underlying point, yes, the cities do need, but, but we need to not stand in their way to make it even more difficult for them. As part of my.
Refresh my memory because that was now two hours and five minutes ago. How is this, um, what is, what does this do to prevent that annexation? Or to complicate that annexation?
Uh, if, if that distance is, is too, if that distance outside the city limits is too small, uh, like a half mile or some other, some other number, that, that, uh, over time, because obviously we're not planning to just plan for next year or the next five years or the next 10 years. We're trying to plan beyond that and set up things so that the entire county will, will have, have more growth, but it won't inhibit, um, more dense development as the city's gradually.
I guess the way I understand what you're saying is, is if we put three acres and you fill up a hundred acres with three acres and the city wanted to annex that and put them in in lots, they couldn't do that because they're already three acres. I just don't see that as a problem, as an issue, that we need to eliminate what we're wanting to do based on what the cities might do. I, I just, it's a difference, I guess, a difference of opinion. That I don't, I don't think we're really inhibiting by allowing development.
Yeah, that's why I'm suggesting that, you know, that, you know, with that 20 acre ring, or we can still subdivide. And we can still subdivide within that mile and a half or whatever it is outside the city limits.
I just think that totally defeats the purpose of making, making change. So if we're going to do that, then we make no change. We just leave it as it is.
It's an option.
Right, that's.
As I say, that, it's, it's still an option one way or the other. And, and the thing about it is to get, like the gentleman that wants to do the four 10 acre plot, it, to do it and do it legally, he's still got to come before us okay. It just makes it.
Because there's a couple miles of Hoyt, right?
So it's in a mile, by a mile and a half.
Under, under current regulations, he has to do that. If we changed it, they wouldn't have to. They wouldn't have to come before us.
Yeah, because then it's already changed to a 10 acre plot.
That's what I'm saying is that by creating that mile and a half buffer doesn't help us any. In, in saying that no changes are going to happen in that mile and a half. Outside that mile and a half, we can make changes. Well, then you're starting to move out into the rural areas again. So I was looking at a two-mile radius around the city to start, that we make that 10 acre change.
So Article 3 talks about notice of amendments to cities. Um, and this is in the zoning regulations. Whenever amendments to the text of these regulations or to the zoning district map are proposed within three miles of any incorporated city within the county, writ notice of such proposed action shall be given to the governing body of such city at least 20 days prior to the proposed action. And it says, see comprehensive plan, page 5.2. So was the intent that the city wanted expansion to three acres past? Three miles past except three acres, three, three miles past the city limits.
What page did you say it was on?
Page two.
Page two.
Page two of the, of the, I'm back here, the zoning part. Who's Carl Meadows?
Okay.
Yeah. Page two of that.
Page five.
I think within three miles.
We have grown faster. I'm usually trying to quit. That goes back to the three-month radius for the cities which everybody was open.
Which they can have.
They have, they have to decide that they want that. Holton has, I think, two miles. And yet it had, had a zone, but they gave it up.
I think Holton did the same. I talked to Jeff Draper about that. I feel like the fact was.
When somebody checking about, like, looking about that.
Subfloodland. Subdividing just south of.
Banner Road on the backside. It was like a 50 acre parcel and it can't be split.
Yeah, they tried to get it to split and.
It can't be split. So they were talking around subdividing and doing it. And then we discussed with them about seeing about annexing it into the city because that could be an option.
Yeah. Well, so are we going to try to come up with some kind of conclusion now? Or are we going to wait until our next meeting and?
My thoughts are this could be looked at anytime on this part of comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be reviewed annually. Annually, whether it means calendar year or not, I don't know, but we need to be reviewing it.
I think the review has to be done by June or July.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's not right away.
No, it's not January. She said it has to be done annually and.
When was the last time that was? I believe it was two years ago. It was kind of last, well, not, the last spring.
Last year.
January was when we approved it.
So they're not.
My first meeting.
It's coming up on annually at the bill by the time that they. Yeah, it could have been.
I'm pretty sure it was a annual meeting.
Yeah, I know it was, I mean, we're not. I don't think it's a strict exact time, but the person just needs to be reviewing it on a regular basis, I think. Yes, within that annual timeframe. Yes, and this council's a review. I mean, we don't have to, there's no requirement we have to make a change.
Right.
Every year, but we do need at least to look at it, which is exactly what we're doing tonight.
And, yeah, I just wanted to discuss it. See, you know, where we're at.
Because it still makes it still, even if we do it to the mile and a half deal, it's still going to have to come to be processed to do it legally by the scripture, basically. It just gives it more easement, free play than what it is right now.
If our intent is to make change, I would suggest that we come with proposed language changes next time to actually look at, so then we're helping us in the forward.
Right. Welcome to the last one of us.
This longer agenda is really killing me.
Yeah, well, this is a work session, so we're very.
We had a list of the items that we were going to take off. That would help me.
Yeah, I think we've got all of this, so thank you for that.
But it, it's just like he said, this, this is just basically trying to figure out what we do need to do instead of setting up and saying, well, we're going to do this, this, this. This way we can kind of bring it out into the general knowledge of us to figure if it even needs to be pushed to an agenda that you want.
So long as we know that what our items are and we're continuing to move forward, not just. Easy to get stuck in the mean circle drain.
Well, and that's the whole deal right now. We're trying to either decide on leaving like it is or what we're going to do.
Do you all want to schedule another work session? We've got a work session.